Okay, we'll call the Wilmer City Council Work Session to order for Tuesday, November 29th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson. Fagerly. Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Two absents are excused. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution of this nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this is a council work session, and tonight we're going to have an update and a presentation from staff and then also from the BKV group. And we're going to be looking at options for City Hall and the community center with site concepts, and then how some of that can look. And staff has been working diligently on this for the last number of months after we hired BKV group, and so thank you for the work that you all have done. And for opening comments, I'm going to start with our Planning and Development Director, and this has been his lead project. So Justice Walker will give us some introductory comments, and then Justice will handle the discussion from there. After the initial presentation of, from BKV group, then council will have some discussion, and that's the point where we'll take some comments. And so if there's people that want to add comments, we'll do that at that time. So at this time, Ms. Valiant, if there's nothing else, I'll go to Mr. Walker.
Yes, please do.
Okay, Mr. Walker, go ahead and make your opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Like you were saying, we've been working with BKV group over the last number of months, just kind of going over concepts, reviewing drafts, looking at facility needs assessments, space assessments, employee projections, to really just kind of incorporate all of these things into the plan. And so over, I think over the past couple of months, we've really just kind of been looking at the drafts, trimming the facility needs assessments, and kind of finalizing how the proposed space that we've determined that we needed fits onto each site. And so tonight is really looking at those drafts, and I think Bruce and Chris can do a better job to explain, I think, how they got to the sites, and, not how they got to the sites, but how they got to the dimensions of the sites, and just show the aesthetics of the buildings that were created. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bruce and Chris.
Mayor, council, good evening. Good to see you all. So the first step of the process was really to understand, excuse me, what kind of spaces were appropriate. So we met with your community group as far as when it comes to the community center, and what types of space you currently have, and what you might have in the community center as you go forward. First off, I want to say you've got a phenomenal community center. The amenities and the support that provides the community is excellent. You've got a lot of services it provides. We had great conversations with them. We looked at the spaces, and we talked about what would increase, would the wood shop increase, would there be more meeting space in those kinds of spaces. So the first step was making sure we understood not just what's going to work for Wilmer today, but what actually is going to work for Wilmer for the next 20, 30 years. So that was the first step. And then we vetted that back and forth with the department, and looked at the space programs and said, are these right? Will this support your mission? We did the same thing with City Hall and City Hall staff. We met with the various departments, talked about the spaces they have, the staff they have, and what kind of space do they need for proper City Hall operations. And what came out of that was roughly a City Hall that, excuse me, I've been talking way too much today. We looked at a City Hall that was roughly about 32,000 square feet. It was a gross area for the building. For the community center, we were looking at about 16,285, I think was the final square footage for those sites. What that initial information gives us in a study is the building blocks to start to look at sites and say, is there adequate room on these sites to support that kind of building? The other thing we talked about with the staff is what kind of parking demands are there? And we wanted to make sure whatever we were doing was going to provide adequate and appropriate parking, not excessive, but what's required. And we looked at what the community center currently has for parking, compared that with the potential new sites. And then for the City Hall, it's more of, it's more for the staff parking and for visitors' parking than for the peaks. I mean, you have to look at peaks of when council meetings are happening and things like that, but we looked at those times as well, and we're able to assess what the parking was. So what we've got tonight is there were a variety of sites that were identified around the city that could support either a community center, or a City Hall, or potentially both buildings combined into one. What we'll present is those, I think there were six sites, correct? Chris?
Yes.
Five sites. Thank you. Five sites. We'll talk about the pros and cons of each, how it fits on the sites. We've got some visioning images, too. So we didn't go ahead specifically... Does that work better?
Yeah.
I feel like I'm supposed to sing when somebody gives me...
[laughing]
So we didn't...
I never feel that way.
You know. So we looked at the sites and how well they fit, and what they could accommodate as far as each one. So we'll talk about each site. We also did some really high level, you know, it's in, at this level of study, you really don't want to show necessarily what a building is going to look like, because that takes a lot of your involvement. It takes a lot of community involvement, because at the end of the day, you want the building to represent Wilmer and all of you the way it should. But what we did is we took the liberties with some of our really good designers to say, this is what these buildings could look like. So we are going to show you some images. It doesn't mean they're designed at all or finalized in any way. It's just to say, these are what these buildings could look like. So I think with that, I'm going to let Chris get into the concept plans. I don't know, Justice, did you want to talk about how these sites were selected, these five sites?
Yeah, so I think we, I'm pretty sure, I think we've kind of covered this in the past, but I'll, so I'll start with the city, like the City Hall site. So primarily, we were, I was contacted, I guess this is probably about a year ago, just about, kind of at this point, just kind of contacted by multiple entities kind of around town that had different sites, about, different ideas about where they thought the City Hall could go, whether it could be a joint facility, or whether it could be an independent facility. And so there were all sorts of sites floated, and I think kind of from a familiarity standpoint, and I think just kind of how traditionally how cities operate, unless there is a, like an expressed purpose for like historical reason or anything, most times City Halls exist within the downtown. And I think just from a familiarity standpoint, I think it would be almost, it'd be really odd, a lot of people would probably still be coming to the site, if we demolished the building downtown and then moved it somewhere else, or if we would go out somewhere else, people would be showing up, I didn't know you guys were here, I've been looking for you guys, and we'd be getting phone calls. It'd be something that we'd have to feel. And so, and then I also think, like what the statement is of, if one of, I guess like, and specifically with the Main Street Coordinator being housed in my department, if we're always encouraging people to spend time downtown, spend money downtown, if we're going to make one of the biggest investments that the city has made over the past however many years, and if we're going to make that investment to leave downtown, how can we then implore people to spend money and locate downtown? It's just one of the things that I, I think internally, we just didn't, it didn't really make sense to us to take that approach. And so that was one of the reasons that we focused on the City Hall being located downtown almost exclusively. And so the sites for the City Hall included the Block 50 site, and so that would be the parking, the large public parking spots next to Bethel Lutheran Church and Frank Law Office. So there's that site. There was also the former Hardware Hank Building that is on Fifth Street. And then there was, we talked about Auditorium as well, as a location for it as well. And then I think kind of, once we worked our way through the process of kind of looking at the Hardware Hank Building, and then also kind of looking at revamping the current site of demolish, and then maybe possibly rebuilding in the current site. And so that's kind, that kind of explains the, it kind of explains like the site locations of the City Hall. Are there any questions kind of concerning the site locations of the City Hall? Or do you guys want me to move on to the community center? All right. So just as far as locations for the community center, so a lot of the things, just kind of the outset, I know there was a lot of questions about kind of, well, where was the engagement, where were the public input, just kind of like in this particular process? And I think for some people, I guess I say this, but for people who like maybe new to this process, there used to be a community center committee that did a lot of the tours, that put a lot of research in, that put a lot of time in and a lot of effort. And so we felt kind of at the outset that we had already got a lot of that public input, and a lot of the input from people who use the community center, and from people who were in elected positions or appointed positions at that time. And so we felt like since, and I think since they dressed, since they put the committee together, and from that, a community center was not built, I think there was a lot of iron frustration from people who were on that committee, and even just from people who frequent the community center now, just like on some of our tours, when I visited the community center, that was one of the things that we ran into. And so that's why we felt that it would be best if we looked at it from a standpoint of just where does it make sense for a community center to be? And I think the location right now, as it's been communicated to me from several stakeholders, is that it could be a better location. People don't like making the left turn onto 71 and leave the community center. Then they feel trapped when they try to go to Lakeland, and they get caught by the train. And then also, the community center, it's at its current location, is not really in a neighborhood. The closest neighborhood is over there by Puerto Rico Street. Not really the easiest, High Avenue's not really the easiest place to walk if you're like a kid, kids just trying to get to the community center, just to hang out. And so one of the things that we thought about the community center and looking at sites for is that community centers belong in neighborhoods, that it needs to be a part of a neighborhood, it needs to be a part of a community. If, a lot of, people still refer to it as the senior center, because it used to be the senior center, but if, and currently right now, with the community center expanding its programming and wanting to have a mainstay, like, no, we are a community center, we offer more services than just besides seniors, that they are targeting all age groups and with all different programming, that it needs to be cited in a location where it is more accessible to people, not just people who drive, also like kids who can just kind of wander down the street, or if they're playing out of parking, then they can make their way to the community center. And so that is why the locations of the community center are predominantly cited in neighborhoods. And so, or neighborhoods are where places where future development would put them kind of right in the middle of the neighborhood, kind of similar to Project Turnabout, how there's almost a statement architecture building within a neighborhood. And so that, that's kind of, that was kind of the thought process behind locations for the community center and locations for the City Hall. For the City Hall, like I just want to reiterate that City Halls, if you can put them there, unless there is a reason to move it, they belong in downtowns. And then from community centers, it's a, community centers in the name, they tend to belong in, like, makes sense for it to be in a neighborhood and be an asset to the surrounding community. And so that was the thought process in the locations for the community center and for the City Hall. And so if you guys have any questions on either, I'd be happy to answer it.
Okay, continue, Bruce.
Thanks, Justice. And so the other things we looked at, too, is ease of access, because like Justice said, the current community center has a little bit of concern. So we looked at ease of access and expandability of any of the sites that were there. So Chris, you want to go into the sites?
Yeah, thanks, Bruce. Hi, I'm Chris Pelkowitz. I'm a partner and senior design leader with BKV Group. Happy to be here this evening. So when we looked at the different sites, we broke it down to the five sites as mentioned. We're going to get into each of these sites, and there's some options within them as well. And what we've identified is, the community center is the orange colored, and that's A, B, and C. That's really working into the more, into the neighborhoods within the city. We have a, and then downtown, we have a combined site that we looked at both, that we're calling Block 50. And then we have the Hardware Hank and existing City Hall block as well, that we looked at a couple of options on. Within each option, we do have, we did really break it out, where we look at some different site criteria, and that's accessibility, transit access, neighborhood proximity, what the parking is like, and what park proximity is to each of these sites as well. So we're kind of trying to weigh them as, trying to figure them out, not just saying, okay, aesthetically, this is going to be the best-looking site, but what's functionally going to be the best site as well. So on Site A here, we're looking at Gesh Park, and this is along Holina here. We're looking at the, there's an existing park, you can see down in the photos in the bottom across here. There's the existing park is really kind of on the corner here, but we're looking to really maintain and refurbish that park and move it a little bit more to the back of the site, and then bring in a new community center here. And with each of these community center options, from hearing from the stakeholders, from our meetings with them, and hearing and reviewing the programs, we've understood a few constant site amenities, and you'll see that throughout. So these are designed in a way that it's taking in some of the understanding of what we heard, but it's not that real in-depth design that Bruce had mentioned, which would be the next step. So what we have in here is, each of the community centers has a covered drop-off space on them. Each also has a nice outdoor patio, and potential other gazebo or other trail access routes to utilizing, connect to the surrounding area. Additionally, we looked at parking and wanting to put, heart balance parking, that certainly, as we recognize a number of seniors use this, we want to put parking close to the building. We also wanted to give the building an opportunity to give a little bit of, in this instance, a little bit of a front yard, so it has a, it's its own, it gives some space to the neighbors, but also makes its own, makes its own space as well. What, a couple other small things we looked at was, we heard there, a need that, and a want for a more dedicated community garden space, so each one of the sites represent that as well. So in this option A on Gesh Park, we're really looking that the building is set off the street a little bit, as it's surrounded by single-family homes, and it's the farmland to the north, and understanding that at some point that may transition to residential, or single-family residential, and how this could be a neighbor for the long-term of all of that residential around it. And then really looking to utilize and incorporate some trails and some, and even a little bridge across the, through the wetland here, that just give more opportunities for the overall neighborhood and users of the community center to just have a good outdoor experience as well. Okay, all right. We can maybe go through a few, and then get some comment, maybe. The next one. The next one is in Lincoln Park along Trot Avenue. So Trot is here on the north side, and there's the existing park here. And part of the concept with this is that that existing park would be reimagined and redone. And then additionally, the community center would come in on this side, there's a ball field there right now, and, you know, could look at other city amenities of where some of that, that ball usage could be relocated to, or maybe even in the reimagined park, there could be opportunity for that as well. With this site, it is, it, it's a little bit further north, so there's a little bit more connectivity along Trot. It does place the building a little bit closer to the street, so a little bit higher visual access to the front entry here. This has parking wrapping on two sides of it. And then when we're working through the community center options and the programming, part of the understanding is really how, just understanding how the inside of the building will function enough that we can thoughtfully lay these out. And then also consider the solar impact on these sites as well, that you'll see for the community centers, if it's kind of an open site, we're facing them east to west for the solar exposure to come around and have good solar exposure around this. And then if possible, we're putting that patio on the south side, to the sunny side as well. Additionally, with that patio connection is the idea that, you know, there's larger gathering spaces than the existing community room, and those would be adjacent to the patio. So there's hope for, you know, there's music nights, and the potential weddings and other things that could occur, and how those, how those spaces could, could work indoor and outdoor for those uses. Additionally, on this site, one of the other areas to look at was the parking. And we, you know, Trot only has parking on the one side of the street. We do have, we're aiming for about 100 parking stalls on any of these options, but also needing to understand what overflow parking could be. And there is the existing lot here that's in a bit of disrepair to the south, just south of Minnesota, but could present an opportunity for some additional parking. And then, you know, there'd be, as the farmland, because we're on the north side of the farmland now, some additional development, just, you know, the opportunity for maybe Minnesota can continue to the east further.
Is the school, the old school somewhere there?
It's just to the east, right here.
Okay.
Yep, yep, no problem. And then, and lastly, I'd just say, we are utilizing a garden space in this one as well. But this creates an interesting vision of an opportunity to reimagine, refurbish the park, and put the community center in there. I'll go to the third, the third one here. Excuse me for one moment. All right, the PDF we sent you lost it here. All right. So we had one additional site that we're looking at along just south of Lakeland Elementary here. And the, the site here, apologies, I'm not sure if it's in your, in your printed packet or not. The, the site had, I can speak to the layout, and we'll make sure that people have this. I'm seeing it in some of the packets here from, from the distance in people's hands, so my apology, it's not on the screen here. The Lakeland layout, what I'll say is, it was quite similarly laid out to, I'll bring it back, to, to Gesh Park, where we had the community center, we wrapped parking around it, but we were, we did not add any parkland in that location. Go back to the overall map here. What we found for some of the positives and negatives of the Lakeland site was, it gets more to the edge of the residential neighborhoods. And you have the, you have the highway coming through, but it's just a little bit less integrated and connective, as Justice was speaking, of really trying to find an amenity that could be more centralized to the neighborhoods, and just create that opportunity for walkability or short-drive usability, where the immediate neighbors can even add just another layer to the site. And this site just doesn't seem to quite have as much of that as, as Sites A and B have overall. But it would, it does give the opportunity to connect in to the, the park just to the east and the, and the trail that's, that's coming through here as well.
We're assuming also that, you know, as, that area between Lakeland Elementary School and this community center would ultimately, that farmland would be developed and fill in some of that community as well. Like you say, it's a little bit more on the edge, whereas the others are a little bit more embedded in the existing areas.
And our apologies, we'll make sure you get an updated packet with, with that site layout, but it's quite similar, as mentioned, of the others. So that, that really is kind of the, the community center individual sites that we looked at. We also looked at it as one, one last option, as a overall combined site. Now, this is, this is downtown, this is the library here on the left side, and the hospital on the right side of the plan here. Trot, again, running along the south, the south edge of the site. And this, this site, we did look at in two ways. We did look at it as just a City Hall site, but we also looked at it as a potential combined building site, that there could be some building efficiencies that could be created by doing it as a single project and having some shared uses overall. But there, there's also additional discussions that Bruce can kind of get into of sharing versus splitting them out. But, but in this instance, overall, we're looking at, it would be a two-story building, and as a very early kind of concept, would have a shared, a shared lobby between the two, the two buildings. And that way, you could utilize shared bathrooms, shared conference rooms, building-wide mechanical systems, you know, even the maintenance person, it would just be a single, a single person for it overall. But then we could look at it in the one concept of just splitting out each side, that the community center would be on one side of the shared building, the City Hall could be on the other side, and they each be two stories. Now, that's kind of an oversimplification of the, of the boxes of how to lay that out, and you'd certainly need to look through each, like, each element of the City Hall function, and how each department wants to function, and where they need public space windows and other things. But that's kind of that next stage of design. But as we can narrow down sites, that further assists us. One other, one other consideration with this is the, is the parking downtown. And when you combine the sites, there is a greater need for combined parking in these. And if you were to just go a, just all surface parking in this area, you would get approximately 80, 80 stalls. If you would, you know, but we looked at, that's probably too small for really what you need. Overflow would be on the city streets, or you could look at adjacent lots. Otherwise, what could potentially occur is you could look at structured parking, which does get more costly. You could go up one level, or you could go down, down one level, and you could get approximately 143 stalls by doing that.
Okay, so Chris, I think what we want to do at this point is, is we want to bring it to the council table to have a conversation about the community centerpiece.
Yeah.
So why don't we bring this, because I think that concluded your four locations, correct?
It did, correct.
Yep. So why don't we get some feedback from the council here, and then after the council has some, a chance for feedback, if the public wants to make, have some questions or something like that, we'll limit that just a little bit, but I'll kind of play that by ear as that conversation goes. So, council, we've got four different pieces that have been presented to us. Three of them look somewhat complementary of each other, and then one is, of course, dramatically different. So before we do that, I'm going to see if either Mr. Box or Ms. Valiant have any comments they want to make.
No, I don't.
Okay. So council, what's your, what's your, what's your first take of it? So Councilmember Osk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two, like I would say, very initial reactions, and one of them I would say would be a fairly strong reaction, is a strong preference for Gesh Park as we're looking at this. I like that we're making use of the wetlands. I like that we're getting trails out there. It's the largest, it has the best parking. It's going to offer great garden space. It seems like it's checking the majority of the boxes in ways that the others don't. The other strong reaction I'm having to this is that the combined downtown location does not work for the community center without really downgrading what it is that we're offering at the community center. I have concerns about parking, and there's no garden whatsoever down there. I mean, the amount of green space is just very, very different. But I love the idea of being able to get a community center out there where it's so connected with a park, and some open space, and some trails. That seems very, very much like the best location that we're looking at here. And I guess maybe just a question, and perhaps it's because we're missing the Lakeland site, did you all have, I don't know, feelings about the Lakeland site as being less desirable for, for any reason, or is it just that it somehow got left out of the packet and we're...
It wasn't intended.
Okay.
And we're going to get it up on the screen in a couple moments here.
Yeah, so I wouldn't say, I guess like, I think the other sites probably just work a little better. I think with, it's like Wilmer Avenue being like a major road, and then I think just kind of out there, I mean, it really, I mean, that is like the edge of town essentially. Like I said, I mean, the others, other two options are more like nestled in a community. And I guess just north of what the would-be community center could be, it could always just be open space. But I think like just the others, just come, the traditional understanding of what a community center is, and then how it operates, I think is better suited at the other locations.
Okay, thank you. That's my first reaction.
Plowman, followed by Osmus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to also double down on that, the Gesh Park location. I think location-wise, you can't do a whole lot better than that with the proximity to the neighborhoods, Bethesda's campus, the YMCA, Lakeland Elementary, and the, all the surrounding neighborhoods, and the trail and sidewalk system around that area. I feel like a lot of it is really complementary to, to what we're going for. It has the space, it has the room, it has the aesthetics. Proximity-wise, it's like almost dead center of town. I like the, the concept of, you know, if money were no object, let's combine both buildings and build this superstructure on this grand campus. But that's just, that's, I don't think it's financially feasible. So with that in mind, I think we have an awful lot of, of opportunity at this site, and being that there's undeveloped land, it could be the catalyst to the development of that land, future development of that land, specifically with regards to like, you know... um, you know, we, we talk a lot about multifamily housing and there's a lot going on, on that front, but with regards to future single-family house, you know, and home construction, which is something that is also vital to a, uh, to a healthy community, that's something we want to prepare for, and it sounds like our consultants did keep that in mind, uh, in the planning process, so I like that, thank you.
Julie?
Okay, so, present parking stalls at the community center, what did we determine that was?
Existing parking?
Yes.
It roughly, yes.
Okay. So then you were shooting for about a hundred, you said, at e- at both sites A and B? Okay.
Correct.
Um, and then square footage of what they presently have is?
It's like fifteen thousand square feet.
Say it again.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. And then what did you, um, plan for in these sites?
Uh, we currently plan for, uh, sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five.
Okay.
Sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five.
Just a little bit bigger, okay.
Yeah. I, I want to say it's a couple thousand, two to three thousand square feet larger.
Okay.
Seems to come to mind.
So I, I guess, um, what we, so this is the city hall, I guess like, um, so part of like one of the things that was kind of confusing, uh, for myself, and I even asked Bruce, and he sent me this, I was looking for it, um, my email, it was this technical explanation of, um, like the square footage, like the shared space, I think, I think it's like the functional space that he has described, so that number is significantly larger, and it looks almost like double, but, um, like you said, it's sixteen, sixteen thousand square feet, I guess if you kind of want to, you, you have that email, do you remember what I was talking about, it's as far as like the shared functional space?
The shared functional space of city hall?
No, like just of the, the community center, and then...
So, Justice?
Okay, so...
I have the program open, but I'm not sure your specific question, there's, so we have, uh, about ten thousand square feet of kind of the, the, the usage of the, the public rooms, and then there's just an additional six thousand of restrooms and storage and electrical room and everything else.
Okay. I guess my, and as far as location, um, I like, um, I like the topography and the location of the Gash one, um, as far as the space we have to work with there, but I like the visibility off of Trot Avenue better and the accessibility. But, um, I like that they both have, uh, the availability to have the garden, I know that's very important to the seniors that use it. That's, that's it.
Chris, when you get that piece up, will you kind of just give me a high sign so when we can take a look at that piece? Councilmember O'Brien, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Didn't we have soil issues with that Lakeland site?
The, um, uh, Orb Consulting, who was working with the middle school to build that, the, uh, special needs school, or whatever you want to call it, they had done soil borings on that Lakeland site and found that soil corrections were going to be very, very high.
Okay. Are, next to the swampland on Gash, are we concerned about soil corrections there? For any reason?
No, so I guess we haven't, since no one's tried to build there, I guess since it's not allowed, I mean, we haven't done any soil borings or anything to see if the site's suitable for construction, kind of like the Lakeland site.
We wouldn't do the soil borings until council has really defined where you want to go.
Right. Okay.
Mike?
That was my question too, is, I know a little bit about that area, there's a lot of wetland you don't see, and a lot of fill you don't see, and I just was concerned about, I know how difficult it can be when you try to build in a wetland, as far as your structure is concerned, foundation is a big issue, like they had over at the middle school, for example. Uh, so I was just bringing that same thing up that Julie brought up, was some concern about the wetland and building in the wetland.
Okay, so I'm going to try to move us along here a little bit. What I'm hearing is that there really is not an appetite for the shared facility on block fifty, and that might be just pushing us a little bit faster than we want to push, but I'm really hearing that there's not, I mean, there's just so many things against the shared facility there, particularly with the green space, the parking, the gardening, uh, the ability for additional expansion as far as park, uh, park equipment, playground equipment, those types of things. So, can we take that one off the table?
I'd also like to take the Lincoln one off the table. I got a, I was contacted yesterday by Rodney Stanska, and he actually didn't want this going to Gash Park because of moving the ball field. So I talked with, uh, a member of the baseball association tonight, and he was against Lincoln and Gash, but now I see they got baseball field on the Gash property, but I don't know why they, we would have to move the ball field and just redesign the, the community center north of the ball field already, that would save us some money there. But I would like to pull Lincoln off because, uh, the, the kids need that ball field there.
Okay. So is there consensus on removing block fifty? I'm seeing consensus, Tom, you were the only one I wasn't seeing that from?
Well, yeah.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, and I'd also like to...
So, um, Bruce and Chris and Justice, we don't need to discuss the block fifty piece any longer, so let's remove that from the discussion, are you okay with that?
Yep.
So when we get to the city hall piece, we don't have to talk about that piece because we've now removed that from the discussion?
Sure.
Make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay. So what we've got now is...
Mr. Mayor, it, it, here is the last plan here as well.
Chris, why don't you go through that?
Yeah, thank you. So here is, here is the Lakeland Elementary plan, the, the elementary school is, is just to the north up here. Uh, the, you know, it, it is a larger site overall here, but we did want to position the building closer to the street overall, that we didn't want it too far away overall, and that there could be landscape improvements here, but we were limiting it to a, a tighter area, just as kind of the, the first step, as we're, you know, looking at, in the red could be some additional trails, but we're trying to be thoughtful in our overall scope where we weren't taking on too much space overall. And then there'd be an opportunity, connect across to the park and to that, the broader trail that's, that's going up as well to the, the northeast. But as you can see, has some of those similar site amenities, we do include a garden space here, and it does have a nice drop-off and, and nice visibility through here. So this would be a, a good auto-friendly site, uh, but it is more at the edge of town, and as mentioned, people are saying there's potential soil corrections here.
And Mr. Mayor and council, I do want to stop back, there was one inf- piece of information I misspoke on earlier. So your existing, uh, uh, community center is roughly about sixteen thousand, six hundred, that's the existing building. The new building that we're programming and planning here is almost twenty-eight thousand square feet, slightly...
That's what I thought.
Say it again?
Twenty, twenty-eight thousand, the number we have is twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven, so pretty close to twenty-eight thousand. And what that d- did was it built on the programs that you currently have, so like, you know, the Burlington Northern Room is, is pretty similar to what it was, it's just slightly larger. All the spaces just slightly increased to accommodate larger capacities, more patronage, more usage of the spaces, so it, it did increase roughly by about that, is it about ten thousand square feet, twelve thousand square feet or so? So that's the actual area of the community center.
Sure. Okay. So let's then get back to our sites. Is there an appetite for anybody on the Lakeland Elementary site? Is there?
I spoke with, uh, with the school last year, and I also spoke with the school here in the last couple days. Uh, they would like to see the site there, uh, for different reasons. Uh, they would really like the interaction of the kids, uh, from the school, and they said if a parking would be an issue, that, that any overflow could be in the backside of the school. They said that wouldn't be an issue, wouldn't be a problem. But, uh, they are, they would like to see, see it there.
Okay.
Councilmember O'Brien, uh, specify who he's been talking to, when you say the school.
Superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Additional comments or questions in regards to this, this particular site?
I'm against the site, we've got, uh, neighborhood right behind there, they're already reached out to a lot of the council on safety concerns about that being the highway already, and a lot of concerns, and we've put up bollards now, and they want a little bit more work done there. I don't think that's going to be a, a good site, I think we'll have a lot more people complaining about traffic coming through the neighborhood and the rates of speed they're coming through there at.
Okay. Additional comments in regards to the Lakeland Avenue site or Wilmer Avenue site? Is your, uh, councilmember O'Brien is favorable to this site, are other councilmembers favorable to this site as well? Okay.
I would, of the three sites, safety-wise, traffic-wise, um, I would say C is my number three, just because of them coming out onto the Wilmer Avenue extension there. That, the traffic coming off over the bridge is going to be a lot faster than the, these wave resident, residential areas.
I would agree with, with that, I, I turn out of that neighborhood at least once a, once a day, and absolutely, I mean, you, you do get kind of a, you know, a nice turn lane there, and it's, it's got some potential, but absolutely, as far as like, compared with the other two.
So, one thing that we really haven't talked about yet, um, and, you know, a couple of you have brought this up as a sidebar conversation, um, is, uh, is, is other community partners. You know, if we're looking at that Gash site piece, um, we really, I think, really owe it to ourselves to have a conversation with the folks at the YMCA. You know, we're in close proximity, is there, uh, joint programming we could do, is there, is there something we do together that would look different than even any of this looks like? You know, um, you know, Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I, I believe that when we tasked you with this is, we kind of wanted a plug and play, right? And so, if you want this size building, and you want the gardens, and you want the walkable space, and you want the parking, these are all kind of plug and plays and are going to move around, so it, we're not down in development so deep, I believe is how you stated it, that you can be nimble and put it to someplace else.
Exactly, Mayor, th- this is a really high-level analysis, it's, it, the programming has helped to identify the space needs, and then the conceptual block plans were to make sure that the building could fit on this site and the parking could be accommodated. Next phase of development, on whatever sites you pick, whether it's one or two, would then delve more into the actual layout of the building, how the, the configuration might fit, but it is very much a plug and play kind of plan at this point.
Okay, so with that being said, if we're looking at the Gash site, I would like us to have staff go and meet with the YMCA and just see if there's any synergies, and, um, Leslie, maybe you can check with Robert Scott, if we're going to have those conversations, can we go into closed session for something like that? And then maybe we can check with Robert about that. So, of the sites, um, if we're going to go to that Gash site, maybe that's a couple angles we can take of it. Um, the Lincoln Park site, I mean, we've, we've heard some opposition to that site, uh, from some community members, other council members that have concerns about the Lincoln Park site. Okay? So what I'm, what I'm seeing here is that Gash Park and Lincoln Park are the two that are coming to the top, are the two sites. Brief comments, a minute or less from, uh, our citizens that are here, that if you've got some comments you'd like to make or questions, Mayor-elect Reese, um, he's going to want you on a, on a mic.
Mr. Mayor, um, the Lincoln site, um, and you look at reinventing that green space between the community, proposed community center and Lincoln School. How about if you ran Ninth Street through there? That's, um, that would be a great improvement for that neighborhood. Another question is, uh, Gash location. It just seems to me, when I was on the council and that Gash Park was developed, that there was some sort of an agreement that said it had to be used as parkland. I vaguely remember that.
Staff, can we look into that, please?
Yep. It's already on our reader.
Jared? Uh, can you address the question that, uh, Mayor-elect Reese asked in regards to punching Ninth Street through? Okay. So our consulting engineer has said that, uh, punching Ninth Street through hasn't been looked at, staff, can we take a peek at that as well?
It is platted there, Ninth Street is platted.
Yes, it is.
So, I mean, it's a possibility that it could happen, but that also takes away, what, thirty, forty feet from the reinventing of that green space.
Since it's all city land, I mean, it's not something we're obligated to do, um, so I mean, like, if, if we wanted to stay a park, I mean, it can just stay a park. Then, uh, and I, I think just kind of like how the, how the traffic flows o- over there now, I, I think the other concern, I, I think it's just as far as like streets being connected, was Minnesota running, um, all the way east. We, I don't, I don't...
Lakeland?
Yeah, 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 not nice connecting to Trot, I don't think that was something that, one that I think we would be favorable, um, since that is like a used park and open space in the community, so.
Anybody else?
One other, one other question. Um, on the Gash, uh, property, the east end next to Lakeland Drive, does the city own that little piece of property that's on the very east end before Lakeland Drive?
So the slough is... Yeah, so the slough is owned by the city, but to the east of the slough, there's still space before you get to Lakeland, that's not owned by the city?
That is not, okay. My question was whether, if the city owned it, if there was space to put city hall there.
Okay. Anybody else from the public that wishes to make a comment to this point? Okay. So, um, we need to give staff a priority here on what they want, what we want them to bring us back, and I think they'll be asking us to take some formal action on, on Monday night, but, um, what I'm seeing and hearing, and I, I think I might be hearing this correctly, is that Gash Park is the favored site of the two, but that Lincoln Park would be probably a close second? Is that, am I hearing correctly? Okay. So, let's see if staff can get ahold of the YMCA between now and next Monday? Check with Robert on that issue? And then maybe, uh, answer those couple of questions that Mayor-elect Reese had?
Yep.
Okay? Any other questions in regards to the community, community center? Things you want to see differently, uh, the layout, um, any of that stuff, any of this real high-level stuff of just what you want to see incorporated into those spaces? I mean, I think, I think they've really captured what we want very well, I think Bruce and Chris, you've done a fabulous job in, in capturing the wants. We're not at the needs part, but we're at the wants part. That's where we're supposed to be right now, is at the wants.
Well, and I, and I would like to say that part of our process when we do this is to make sure we're understanding the, the needs, not the wants, because we do, we, we do a lot of this around the state, and we compare it to other programs and other space sizes and other, other departments, and everything that was planned is, is efficient and appropriate too, so I just want to assure the council that as well.
The only concern I have is, is the square footage of the site. Uh, the square footage, you know, going from sixteen thousand, seven hundred basically to basically twenty-eight thousand, uh, substantial increase in size, and with that substantial increase in size, the only funding we have for it at this point is two, is two million dollars, and I know for sure just the site work's going to be probably close to that.
It will be more than that.
Yeah, right. I think we're going to be a little over the two million dollar budget, so, yeah, that, that's why I say wants and needs. So, I understand you're saying that these are needs, but we also have the financial constraints, similar to what Councilman Plomon had stated earlier. Is that good marching orders, Council, Tom?
I just have one question, maybe Rob can help me, you know, ease my mind on this Lincoln School one. Uh, there was concern about scheduling for youth baseball, softball, rec traveling, both, removing one or two fields for, out of our system, how would that really affect us removing Lincoln, Rob?
Well, it...
Well, we gained a field actually with the complex being built out at the Civic Center location and we still have the, the softball field that's on the school property. So, taking a field out, out of the equation, I think we just had to get creative about what other fields that we need to use and maximize the space that we have. For example, can we use Garfield Field a little bit more? We like to use Lincoln. It's a, it's a nice site for us to have baseball and softball games at, so.
Well, it's right in town, you know, you're driving along.
Yep. And then we had the, the additional parking lot off to the side where it's easier parking for us and that type of stuff. Just that they need to be upgraded.
So, we lost that one. It would put a little damper?
It would. We would have to get creative with some of the scheduling that we have or utilize some of the other fields that we don't use all the time.
How many people do you think walk to the ga, walk to the games versus being transported to the games?
Well, I was gonna say majority of them, that they, they use a car to get to the games.
Justice?
Yeah, and so I, I was gonna say, when thinking about utilizing Lincoln Park, one of the things with the Imagine Park was, was the, with the reimagined park space there was making sure that was gonna be upgraded to be on par, to be almost like a Regent, Neighborhood Park, I, I, I think kinda like on the scale of like a Rice or something like that, like with a splash pad that could be updated to have, that could be upgraded to still have and maintain the facilities that already exist in Lincoln Park. So, that was something that was a part of the conversation that was not omitted. It was definitely something that we had at the forefront of the conversation, make sure it would still be possible to serve the needs that it currently meets.
Okay, so, so kinda what I heard you say there is that, that this would have a look of, of, of our neighborhood parks similar to Rice in Miller?
Correct.
So, you'd be looking at adding more functions there then?
Yeah, possi, yeah, possibly. And, and I think it was just one of the things that we talked about, that if this was gonna happen like with the community center, that it was gonna need to be upgraded to be on par with the other parks in the community.
We had discussed, Mayor, also at that park, that it would have a outdoor pavilion-type sort of thing in a reimagined park. So, not, not necessarily have expensive amenities, but maybe amenities that could be used for even the, the community center and outdoor amenity that the community could center could use for small music venues and things like that that they might wanna bring in at that reimagined area. Also, just to give us some perspective, if you've been out at the new event center, the floor space at this, at the event center is fourteen thousand square feet, to give you some perspective as to what fourteen thousand square feet could be looking like.
Okay. Okay, so, the direction I'm gonna give staff at this point, from what I'm, I'm, I'm taking what we've heard from the citizens, I'm taking what you guys are telling me, what I'm hearing from the consultants, is that our preferred site looks at this point to be Gesh. Our backup in a close second, maybe a little bit farther back, is Lincoln. And we wanna have conversations about community partnerships, if there's ways to have those conversations. If we're gonna go to Lincoln, I think what Mr. Walker is suggesting is we should put in the plan potentially punching Ninth through, but for sure taking Minnesota to Lakeland.
Yeah, so I, I think Minnesota to Lakeland was something that we accounted for. And I think just as far as like Ninth going through, I think that's probably something that we could, it'd probably make more sense to just either replat it entirely or just like make sure that people understand that it's, it's a park. Like, it's not happening. It's a park.
Okay, but what, what our citizens are saying is they want to see that option. So, what I'm saying is, let's take a look at it, let's see what it looks like. And if after we take a look at it, it doesn't work, then we can go to a replat. But we need to have the conversation. We need to, we need to methodically go through this step by step.
Certainly.
Okay. Questions from staff? Questions from council? Did I, did I merely represent what you want? Okay, let's go to City Hall. This is the one I wanted to get done a long time ago. Let's get after it.
Well, great news. We've got, we've got some options to share or things for people to think about here. So, we start with the, back to the Block 50, the downtown site, again to orient people. Trot Avenue is on the south here with the, the library and the hospital. We, with this, we've got the site lay, the building layout just as a, as a simple rectangle right now. We, we have a, a public plaza on the, on the east side of the site. And we did explore it on both sides of the site, but felt that with the connection to the hospital, it may be better utilized and just it's got a little bit higher visibility with the, being on the, the higher vehicle traffic on this side of the, the site as well. And then we did look at the, the site parking, that we have a, a primary site parking lot through here with a, potentially a cover drop-off or just a drop-off space. And then we really just took the, it is one-way angled parking for this portion right now. We really maintained it similar like that, that we would come back, rebuild that with nice vegetation at the edges, but just really maintain the parking stalls that are currently there as we understand the church also utilizes some of these parking stalls on, when they have services. Clearly on the downtown site is all three city halls and the, and the, the other one that we're taking out have is just good access for, for, throughout the city here. There's certainly the, some city transit or at least the dial-a-ride as well beyond that, if anyone needs to utilize that for, for getting here. And then additionally here, there's ample parking and then there's additional street parking as we just have it as the single use right now. Going to the next. That's a great point, yes. So, but part of imagining this site as well was that there is, there is an existing building here. I believe it's the, the dental office here. And with, with this, th- these are larger visions for, for the future. We, we did include that site in, into this as well. So, there's the purchase cost of, of that. So, it creates a little bit of a, a longer view of how this may work overall. Okay, I'll go to the next one here. Those other ones were the two-story combined one that I just skipped past. We, we have two on the existing city hall site. The existing city hall is located right here where I'm highlighting. This is, we're, we're calling it the Hardware Hank Option. This is option one on this site, where the Hardware Hank Building would be demolished and a, a new building would be, would be put here. What, an additional challenge of this is there is the, that there is a neighboring property also cutting into this. And they, they do have seven or eight parking stalls behind their building as part of their property. And we're having to look at that in this instance, we would give them seven or eight new stalls adjacent to, to their building, that there'd have to be either a land swap or some sort of easement to, to make that slight adjustment. But it was really for the, the traffic flow of vehicles was requiring some adjustment there. We're looking at, at a drop-off here on this side and there would be a, a street presence entry on this side of the site as well. The, there, there are some challenges to locating the building here overall, that really you can see how the, the, the parking ends up getting a bit disjointed and, and just kind of the, the overall layout of this, that the, the, excuse me, one other element, we had considered a, a small public plaza here on this corner, but it, it, so there'd be some sort of connectivity and a, and a grander sidewalk type treatment through here to connect in in the rear. But as you can see, it gets a little, it gets a little broken up compared to the other, the other site we're looking at. And parking becomes challenging. The, the other issue with this, with this location as well, being that it's a mid-block building, it does challenge how mu, the, the views and the windows into the building as well. That there are adjoining buildings next to it and the, the three-story auditorium. So, overall, we were asked to look at this site a bit in depth, but we're finding that it does have some additional site challenges. But, let me go back. For one other positive point of this site though, or the, the, the Block 50 site, is that it could allow the existing city hall to remain in use while the new construction is occurring. And then a, a, a clean move to the new building, then the old city hall could be demolished and the parking could be built at that point. In comparison, we created an option two on this site that looks at replacing a new two-story city hall in, in the location of the existing city hall. Now, the immediate challenge of that is the city offices would have to relocate for the construction period of time and there's costs and just, you know, manpower, time associated with that move and figuring out how all of that function would, would move and then get everything back up and going and then move again. This is, well, we did not take the, i- in this, in this study, we did not take the Hardware Hank portion of it, as we didn't wanna necessarily create parking in the center here, but that could add some additional parking stalls to the site, possibly another twenty stalls. And when we re, when we account for the neighboring stalls, again, it, it really limits the parking overall on, on the amount of land in this area here. There are some adjoining sites that, that there could be some discussion of how those could be utilized to additionally have a little bit more overflow parking. Because day-to-day, the city hall isn't gonna need a lot of parking, but when there's council meetings or maybe a large council meeting, there's gonna be a much higher demand overall for, for that parking. So, those are the, those are the three we looked at and obviously mentioned we had the combined one that we've left, left to the side.
Okay. Again, we'll do the same process we did last time. We'll take comments from the council first and then if there's members of the public that wish to make some comments, we'll take those as, as well. So, of the three options that are being looked at here, do we have comments? Does any councilmembers have comments in regards to any of these three options? Vicki?
I'm concerned about those eight parking stalls for the existing business. They're right in the middle. They're, if we do a city hall where it currently is, they're right in front of it. How are we gonna keep people from parking there? You know, that don't belong to that business. It's gonna be impossible.
It'd have to do with some type of signage, probably, but.
That doesn't help.
As you know, that doesn't work. Yeah, you have some personal experience with that, yeah. Even when you say we'll tow you if you park here, they still park there.
They do.
They do, yeah. Additional comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm finding it hard to be able to comment on the three options, knowing that there's possibilities of community partnerships that would, that would present different options that have come to the table since, since we tasked them with, with these three possibilities. I feel like those are, those are real possibilities that we need to look into.
Can I?
Location-wise, I'd probably like Block 50, but then I have concerns about the parking for downtown. I thought I had heard at one point we were talking about underground parking, if there was a building there.
We mentioned that, the opportunity for it, but I think the, the groundwater issue does need to be looked at. If there are groundwater issues there, constructing that, it's gonna be a lot more expensive. Adding an above-ground or a below-ground parking easily could be a two to four million dollar impact to the project, just from a cost standpoint.
Okay. How, how can we come to terms with losing that many parking spots for Rice Hospital and the library in the downtown?
I think, I think those are real concerns. Mike?
The Mayor-elect mentioned on the, this places we're talking about for the community center, could we possibly put the city hall there as well? I don't know if that's a possibility, but I've seen other communities where they're both together and they work out very well. I don't know what the, the land is down there, what you need, but just an idea. I mean, it was brought up, so I'm just bringing it up too. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Andrew?
Thank you. I want to, first of all, Block 50, I think visibility-wise and locale, when you're driving the downtown, I mean, it's smack in the center of downtown, so it would be very visible, very prominent location. But I think, I think it presents a ton of challenges for not only its own parking, but surrounding businesses and whatnot. I really wanted to like one of the two options at the current city hall site, but they just don't seem feasible. If we're gonna be spending this much money on a new building, we really should ought to not have to make sacrifices. The community should not have to make sacrifices. You know, say people wanna come to a city council meeting and whatnot, that complete parking lot will be full and it will be overflow onto wherever now. A lot of times they're, they're, maybe in the evenings and whatnot, but I, I feel like just both options, although I wanted to like them, seems like they're, they're just, and compliments to the, to the architects for doing what they did, trying to work the, the puzzle pieces together. But sometimes you only have what you have to work with. And given that there's a building in place and that there's some parking constraints already in place, it seems like it's just not, no matter how you work the puzzle pieces together, all available, available options are not gonna give us best bang-for-buck return on our investment here. So, unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not feeling any of the three.
Tom, follow me, Julie.
Um.
Tom?
Tom.
Just following up with what Andrew said about having a city hall downtown. Now, in the past, we, we were talking about having out at Robbins Island, you know, across the street where it currently is. How come there wasn't one brought up with both the city hall and the community center out there too? You know, just for a backup, just in case something wasn't gonna mesh with the, the way people thought it would be.
Well, I think that's why we're having the conversation tonight. I mean, I think that might come to the table again. Yeah. Julie?
The three locations for city hall, square footage-wise, did that, was that to accommodate a chamber, council chambers in all three? It was, okay.
So, so right now, you've got roughly about twenty-eight thousand square feet in your city hall, which includes the basement and a little bit of support area in the auditorium as well for records and things like that. The current program shows an area of about thirty-two thousand square feet. So, it's only about four thousand square feet bigger, but it's operationally more functional the way the plan would lay out. Hopefully that answers your area of questions.
Go ahead.
When you were talking about the Hardware Hank site, you said that we would demolish it?
So, we, we didn't have plans. There weren't anything available to really look at the internal layout of it. So, the question is, can you really repurpose a building like that for a city hall and make it work? By the time you're done trying to intricately relay out the spaces on the inside of it and make that building look like a city hall, it's probably gonna be pretty close to tearing it down and rebuilding it.
Vicki?
I guess I'm not really excited about either of these options either. And I love downtown. I want to do everything to support it, but I don't feel like having either one of these there would be beneficial. Block 50 is great, but we're losing a lot of parking, which we're already short of parking. And when we have community events, we use that location a lot for things. We use the parking lot, so we wouldn't be able to do that anymore. So, and I, I like the idea of putting them together. I think we would save money putting community center and city hall together because we toured and we looked at a lot of locations and they were sharing a lot of the same things. So, I think we could save money that way.
I'm just gonna add that I think it's interesting as we look at the sites for the community center, I feel like we had one that we were all really excited about, another one that we were really excited about, and a third one that we were like, yeah, we could even see this. And then when we tie ourselves to a very specific area of town, we're getting them working really hard and coming up with things that just don't work.
Right.
Like, I think we, we need to open the search more wide. And again, like, I'm gonna advocate again that I think we need to look at community partnerships here as well. And maybe it ends up as a, as a joint, you know, city hall, community center, as Vicki just said, but, I mean, I'd almost rather see it out at Lakeland Elementary, south of Lakeland Elementary or over, you know, off of Trot right now than what we're seeing downtown.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, one, one thing to keep in mind, and I understand it sounds like a lot of the concern has been parking and that parking impact and that in the downtown core, but I think one of the options too is if you were to do a new city hall and move your operations to that new city hall, you could demolish building on the existing site and then create added parking. So overall, it might be a little less than what you currently have on block 50, but I think there's some ways to recoup some of that space at a very kind of marginal cost rather than a parking structure. Parking structure is a bigger discussion when you have, when you're looking at overall community development. If you're encouraging community development and increased expansion in downtown core, the idea of parking structures does come up to accommodate that, that bigger need, so.
Yeah, that was one of the things I wanted to touch on. I think if, the parking considerations were definitely a part of the conversation as well. I think if we were going to build on block 50, it's no secret how, how much it's used on a daily basis. The idea would have been that what we, once we demolished the existing city hall, that there would be a parking structure that would go up there, whether that was two or three stories to accommodate the existing needs for parking downtown and then start looking at how we could replace that and then like what the timeline would be. And so that, that was the thought, not that we would just lose those parking spaces and then they'd be gone forever and then people would just have to deal with it. It was more so in line with this would happen and then following, like immediately following it, we would start looking at either paving that over for parking or just going up with the parking structure to accommodate the parking needs for downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I was going to ask specifically about that. Do you have any kind of feel for, for like courthouse usage of the block 50 area? And so if the current city hall location, even if that was just turned into a surface lot, is there potential for courthouse usage parking to transition over to that site, surface level, freeing up square footage?
Yeah, certainly, certainly. So I just kind of working there and kind of seeing, seeing, I, I think there are several times a week where, I mean, it's, it's pretty packed, count on like Sixth and Becker and all that. But I think that the idea that I kind of had in my mind was just more so of like looking at like a leased parking situation of like turning that like paid part, turning that parking structure into a paid situation. I think, I think the free parking of just like surface areas, the one where it's going to be super hard to replace, but I think for the people who would be interested in paying or the people who work downtown or live downtown, I think that'd be the option to make it more fiscally approachable than just kind of, we're going to build this $8 million structure and just turn it over for fun. That doesn't really make any sense. But yeah, like I said, I think doing it in conjunction with the project to make sure that it's not just a total loss on the parking was definitely a part of the conversation and something that we marked as kind of paramount of if we're going to do this, then we have to do this.
Just, you, you jolted one other thought in my brain. What was the last that we had discussed? The county and any potential intent that they had regarding courthouse? Nothing on the table in the near future?
Well, we were in a position to where there was conversations that that would move fairly quickly, but then when we pulled that off the table and didn't move, unless there's something new now, but.
No, I had talked to the administrator, oh, less than a year ago, about the same, because that had been brought up and that's no longer on the table. They are not moving ones bit. They're staying, they've redone the building.
So, so, so we, we had a window up here.
We're, we're talking about, this was maybe three, four years ago.
Five years ago.
Okay. I, okay. I remember that conversation.
So, and since then, we did the district heat, they replaced all the windows, they've done a lot of interior work on it, they've done a lot of upgrading with the computer system.
So they're fixed.
So, so they're there for a while now, correct?
Okay.
Now, unless this is different, they said, if something changes on your side, let us know, but you know, the, the good deal that was out there probably isn't there anymore. They would want to re, they would want to recoup some of those costs.
Because I did talk to the administrator and it's no longer on the table.
Okay. But we do know that they are, they are fixed.
They're going to be there for a while.
They're fixed.
They're not going.
Right.
Justin?
Yeah, I'm wondering, so when we're talking about parking and replacing some, you know, prime parking there on block 50 with, you know, the idea of like, once we demo the existing city hall, there'd be parking there, it seems like we're shifting parking and making it less desirable. We're moving parking away from where people in my mind are going to park and where they're parking to go to their destination downtown. So I guess my question is, have we done a study of parking downtown to know the people that are parking in that lot, where they're going? Which is a quick yes or no, I would, I would hope, but have we done one? Okay, we have.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so there is like an existing parking study that was kind of used in conjunction with the block 25 development, and I think there was an older one prior that also looked at the amount of parking that was kind of used in downtown as well.
And that identifies, you know, of these many cars that are parking in this area, their destination is the hospital, their destination is the goodness, their destination is.
Yeah, so destinations are included, but then also like a very big part of it is talking about like long-term parking of how like that's like the real issue is that we have like these, we have the 10-hour parking lot, I think on the north side of downtown, then we kind of next to the city hall is like a three-hour, but really kind of looking at something for like the overnight parking and situations like that. And I think kind of in that is really like missing the opportunity there for, like I said, like a leased situation that can be a revenue generating thing that can help pay for a parking structure, just because parking structures themselves are very expensive, so.
Just for comments or questions? So I think you did a good job of laying out what we need, but you did a bad job of bringing us a solution. So kind of what I'm hearing is none of us are feeling really warm and fuzzy about these downtown locations. So, I mean, that's, that, that's kind of cutting to the chase.
It's painful.
So, so one of the questions is acquisition of other property. So I think one of the questions I would pose to all of you is how important is the city hall to be downtown? How much is that a representation of the city? And like Justice says, you know, we do see a lot of cities where the city hall is in downtown. We have seen newer cities, like when we did Ramses years ago, where it was in an area where it was undeveloped and things came later on. So I, I think the first question is, where do you all want to be when you grow up?
Well, we're headed there, but you, you, you got a little bit ahead of me, but that's all right. So I just want to know, are there any of the public members that want to make any comments about, did the council miss any piece in regards to this? Your feelings as far as the downtown piece, so. Rudy will get you the mic here.
Mr. Mayor, Council, the question I have is if city hall has not had a decision on where to relocate, will this slow up the building or the progress that we're hoping for the community center?
That's, that's a good question and, you know, I, you know, I have two meetings left. And if you talk to Britta, Britta will tell you in her first, first month here, she was told she was going to be moving to a new building and, and she has had her balloon pop so many times, she doesn't even want to inflate the balloon anymore. I believe you have a council now that wants to make a decision, at least the majority of the council wants to make a decision. So I personally think things are going to move rather quickly. You have a new mayor coming in, I think the new mayor can, will be able to maybe guide the discussion maybe a little more eloquently than what I've been able to do it. I think there's been some, some pushback of council members, just simply because I'm the mayor, I'll be honest with you. And so I think getting somebody new at the helm, I think will be helpful. It's a new vision, it's a new way to look at things. You have an administrator and an operations director that are committed to doing this for the city and they're committed to get this done. I think if you listen to Ms. Valiant's first interview that she did with the radio station, she wanted to get that on the plate within the first year. And, you know, so, so we're trying to get this done and, but I do think that you have a council and, and your council is seated here with the exception of the gentleman sitting beside you, behind you and next to mayor-elect, but he'll be taking Andrew's place, but I mean, I think even if Andrew were here, he would probably want to move this through quickly as well. So, so I think we want to move this quickly. The problem has always been around the financing piece and, and so the question has always been what comes first, the concept or the money? And so I've tried to put everything in place so that the council is in a position to where the concept and the money can, can meld and become one and then can move forward. So I remember the first conversation on city hall was in 2007 that I was involved in. Now we're in 2022 and we still haven't made a decision on city hall. And so I, I think that this council probably is in a position to where they want to get that done, or at least I hope so, so. And I, I can't speak for Carl because Carl and I haven't talked about this issue, but I know Mayor-elect Reese wants to get it done as well, so.
Mayor, Mayor Cavill, just one quick note from Mayor-elect Reese. You've done a sterling job. Really appreciate what you've done and I hope we can bring some options that will work in the near future, but thank you for your leading very much.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Jeff. For those who don't know, I'm the maintenance guy at the community center. One of the questions I have wanted to ask is, okay, so you're talking about combining community center and a city hall. Would that make the community center smaller? Because right now, we are dealing with storage issues. We have very little storage between my equipment and my tools and my chemicals are all stored in different spots. I got them stored in three different spots, but kind of nice to have it all together. But one of the things is that we've been really concerned about is storage, because a lot of people want to store their stuff there and we're, Britta's getting very creative. She's got me putting up shelves and doing this and doing that, so you know, we could use as much storage as we could possibly get. And so I guess what I'm concerned about is if they're together is if, okay, is that going to make, we're not going to be able to have as much room at the community center as we would if they were separate.
Yeah, I don't believe that that decision's been made yet, but I think that, that council is well aware of the storage needs. I know that that's been brought to me numerous times, so I think the council is very aware of what's going on in regard, in that, in that regard, so, yeah.
And Mayor, Mayor, if I could quickly too, that really in the programming and planning, we didn't look at if it was combined, if that would reduce that. You have a shared lobby, you know, so there's certain areas that could be shared, like a shared lobby as you come into the building, could support a community center as well as a city hall. There's some public restrooms that you might have that could support both facilities. So there's a little bit of shared there, there's a little bit of efficiency with a single mechanical electrical system that supports one building versus two. There's some slight efficiencies. And then recently, we did the City of Independence where we actually created a city council chamber where it's kind of like the Wizard of Oz and pulling back the curtain. We had a panel wall that separated the dais, so you could use that room, a large room is a large meeting room. So there's a little bit of efficiency that could be gained, but it's not tremendous, probably in the tune of a million to a million and a half overall the, the project impact.
Kate? Go ahead.
My name's David Frye. I have two questions. One, I haven't heard anything about the power station and when that is demolished, could we use that for the city?
No.
I think that's going to be a brownfield, right?
Yeah.
It'll be a brownfield, so you can't build on it.
The utilities isn't giving up that property. There's, as you know, behind that power, they are creating a substation right now. So they're not giving up the power plant property.
So even though it disappears, it'll still be.
Yeah, and the issue is that it is, it is a highly contaminated area.
I knew it was contaminated, but I wasn't sure what, how that would be handled.
They're, they're going to mitigate it the best they can, but it's similar to the, the lands, well, it's not, it's different, but kind of like the land over by the wastewater treatment plant. So you can do stuff on top of it, but you can't put any footings in or anything like that, so.
Okay. The other question that I have, if you're considering putting the two buildings together and the two functions, I have been amazed to the, the community center and find out that I couldn't find a parking spot. And so if you're considering putting these two buildings together, if there's going to be any activities because the city is getting better and also the community with Britta's activities and everything, you're going to end up running out of parking spots very quickly. And so that's the major consideration that I have. I mean, that's a pretty good parking spot out there, but when you drive in and you've got to go around a couple of times and park clear over on the other side by the radio station, you know, it is a concern. And there are activities oftentimes going three-deep in the functions that are on there in an evening.
Sure. Thank you, thank you for your, for your comments, yeah. The proposed site does, does add an additional 10 spots just for the community center over what it currently has, is what the architect stated, so went from approximately 90 to approximately 100. Okay, Councilman Palmer.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I didn't know if we're going to speak again as council members or not before we finish here, but I was just going to grandstand for two seconds.
Okay, let's all watch.
Just after a couple of the comments, yeah, at the end of the month, I'm done. Councilmember Sholdies will be taking the spot, so you have a month to lobby him. But, but if I were here, I would, I would absolutely push strong for a community center, especially because the local option sales tax, I mean, this has been talked about for a long time, but the local option sales tax is in place and has been in place, so that is a tax that is currently being collected and has been collected for some time. So I think it's only right that that money be spent and be spent, you know, costs are going up. And so I think that's a project that needs to be done quickly, so I would support that. I believe incoming council members and mayors would also support that as well, but they can speak to that on their own. With regards to building efficiencies, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in, when asked about storage and whatnot, based on past renderings that we've seen and also past conversations we've had with architects, I, and the architects and consultants can, can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but when, when looking at square footage and footprint, just based on modern design practices, I mean, new structures compared to old structures, we're getting much more efficient in terms of design. So you could take a building of the same square, even the same square footage, and even if you had to match the same square footage, you could maximize efficiencies and get much more, a much better, much more efficient, effective layout, correct?
Absolutely, Councilman.
Okay, so I, I would assume that future layouts, you know, it's not just square footage, but it's also design too. So I have confidence that, that because we're utilizing modern designers and design practices, that certainly things like storage, that should be of least concern, because they, they seem to do a really good job of taking things like that into account from what I've seen.
Julie?
First, to talk about the community center, there was the comment about the budget of $2 million, and I know I'm a broken record, but nobody is under the, I think, impression that we're going to build that community center for $2 million. That is a portion of what is going into that building. I just want to hit that about the 15th time.
At all?
We're not building that building for $2 million. So in my perfect world, when I win the lottery, I like the Gash Park area, I like the expansion area there, I like the, and again, if we needed more parking, there's on-street parking. I would like the community center there. Would we look at the existing site then of where the community center is for the city hall? I know that's probably a larger area than we needed because we had looked at it combined there, but it still is, as you're coming into the city, it's a focal point, it's right across from our Robbins Island Regional Park, front and center again. I would, I would opt for that.
So the administrator and I had a conversation earlier today and I said to her, I said, what's your preferred site? I said, we've got all these sites and, you know, all of that. And, and she said, I really think the council really needs to take another snapshot at looking at the current community center site. And if we take a look at the way the city is expanding and the city is growing, it appears that the growth is going north. that the growth is going north. It's going, you know, I think, I think if we look 50 years out, we're going to be doing some to the east. You know, the original thought was that development was going to be southwest, and we've really seen that kind of, you know, kind of hem itself in. So it looks more like, you know, I mean, there's been conversations in the last five years, twice, about, you know, something with Eagle Lake. Does Eagle Lake end up coming into the city? And does all that land then end up coming into the city? So then that looks at what should we be doing up through that corridor? There was conversations about the Candy Power Building, and could we do something on the Candy Power Building before UCAB took that over? And so, you know, maybe there are some synergies there, but the thing that I like about the work that we've done up to this point is that that can be picked up and moved someplace else. It doesn't necessarily have to be in one spot. You know, they brought us the three locations, one shared location, but we can look at this. And I think what staff and the consultants are looking for is, as Bruce had stated a bit earlier, they want to provide what you want and what you feel is needed for the community. And so, maybe we need to then have that conversation, but I certainly don't want to slow down the conversation about the community center. I mean, if you do rough math, you know, you know, can't remember what district it was I went to school, but it was kindergarten all the way through sixth grade, and we all sat in the same room. So you do that kind of math, I mean, you're about eight and a half million, just for the community center. And that is not really a luxurious building. That's entry level. And then when you get to City Hall, I mean, you're probably pushing that 16 to 18 million. And so, you know, the numbers that we've been talking about up to this point, the first time I brought up numbers, and now people are trying to, you know, pen me in on, well, Mr. Mayor, you said $10 million. And that was 2017. You know, last year, we had a 22% increase in building costs. The year before that, it was probably closer to 40% the year before that. And so you add all those numbers up, you know, we probably could have done something. I mean, Andrew, I think you'll probably remember, probably clearly, when we toured the Hardware Hank Building, and we thought we could do that for $2 million at the time and have City Hall up and operated in less than a year out of there. But we didn't move then. And the right decision was made, because if the council wasn't ready to do it, we shouldn't have done it. So when you're ready to move, is the time to move. But I'm going to urge you guys to move, and to do something, and to get something done. I know that the architects are chomping at the bit to show us what things could look like.
Well, but I wanted to say how good your math was apparently back in elementary school, Mayor, because I think from a City Hall standpoint, you're right. It's, the construction value is right between that 16 to 18 million. And then so everybody knows, you know, when we came out of COVID, really right before 2020 to 2021, there was a spike in construction cost. If you look at all the construction trade information, there was about a 20% spike in COVID. That took everything way up high. We've seen short supply chain issues, we've seen shortage of labor to install things, and so we continue to see a little bit of increase. Historically, it used to be anywhere from 4.5% to 5% per year for inflation. We did hit a peak, we're starting to see some of that level off. Based on the area and the program information right now, and we'll present that later on, but you're right, City Council is about a 16 to 18 million dollar project, construction cost, there's other costs associated with that. The community center, based on the size, is more like 13 to 15.
Ooh, wow.
It's a little bit higher than what you initially thought because of the size. But that's just a general range of construction cost. And again, I think it's important, as we come back to a next presentation, to then talk about what's the way to pay for those facilities, and what's the impact? Because it's an important piece.
Okay. Leslie? I'm sorry, Ms. Valiant?
I'm sorry. I didn't answer to that, too.
What do you need from us yet tonight? I think we've given pretty good direction on the community center.
I think so.
I think we're a little more vague on the...
I think we have some direction on the City Hall, though, too. I think we have an idea that we could maybe look at the community center site. I mean, if we're not going to move the community center, we still have that site that is available. I mean, I would say our initial goal when we started this process back in March was we wanted to use property we already owned. We weren't really looking to purchase property. That was kind of a goal of ours. You know, I know we talked about the Hardware Hank Building, but that was on the table because, in all the past discussions that you had with open houses and such, it was the City Hall should be downtown. So we were just kind of moving along with that, because we didn't want to redo those public hearings, meetings and all that again. Like that we had our direction, and so I think this really provided more of what was missing in the conversation. I think we've really come a long ways with these conversations. You've really had some more in-depth as to what the sites looked like and things like that, and how usable are they? Or are they really reusable? No, they're not really looking real keen, you know, that kind of thing. So I think this is quite helpful in that regard. And so I think that, you know, we can have more of those discussions with those partnerships that we've been, that have been also kind of been bubbling up over the last month and a half, too. There's been discussions on various partnerships, so. So I think we'll just continue, we'll continue working with Bruce and his staff in that regard, and see if we can come back with a couple other variations or whatever, or more information for the sites that, you know, keep the Gash Park and the Lincoln Park in play, and then focus more on the City Hall site, and more maybe as a combined site, too.
Okay. Staff, council okay with that? Okay, we're adjourned.
Oh, we are.
Oh, we got to look at the concepts. Sorry, Bruce. I just see...
He works really hard on these.
Yeah, I just saw him grabbing for something in his briefcase to throw at me, so.
What a five-minute break.
So Mayor, again, there's a lot of work to be done. But we have some of our designers, you know, one of the things BKV, really, we have some great young talent, that really we gave them the challenge, and what could this look like? And so Chris might want to talk through these a little bit, but very high-level imagery, just to talk about it.
Yeah, so we just created two options for City Hall and two options for the community center, just for something to think about. These are, these two options are on the Block 50 site for City Hall. And this is out on the plaza at the east side. We're basically kind of at the hospital, looking over to the building. We have a one and a half-story entry-covered canopy through here, and coming around the corner from this canopy down to this lower right image, see, we have kind of a two-story space that this could be really the, thinking this is the city council chambers and kind of a community living room of sorts. As Bruce had mentioned, it could be a multi-use space potentially. And then really coming back with a one-story space, this is the, these two lower-left images of showing the building coming down and being a one-story space for the rest of the offices. So really intentional to create a grand corner experience and then kind of pull it back once we get back, to try to be good stewards of the dollar overall. Yep, number two, please. Number two is just a different feel overall, that it took the council chambers and put it up on the second floor of just a little bit more of a glass box here, a long trot, and just giving a little bit more of a modern interpretation of what it may want to look like overall. So just a couple of things that, as Bruce said, there's a lot of discussions on, depending on the site, what's the architectural context, what's the feel that the city and the citizens want their City Hall to be? And I think those things will all overlay into whatever the... truly is, but it just gave us the opportunity, as Bruce said, to challenge some of our younger designers, and for me to kind of direct them to come up with some interesting things to generate some continued discussion on this. Any thoughts here? We could go to the community center ones quick.
I like the ideas. I think it's good, and I think that they can fit anyplace, they don't necessarily have to be on that site. I think the concepts could work at either place. I like the first one better than the second one personally.
It's kind of industrial.
And I think it has sustainability, too. I mean, it's not something that's going to be here and then gone.
Right.
Comments from council? Okay, go to the community center.
On the community center, we took a little bit different approach, that it could be in a neighborhood. So this version, we looked at pitched roofs a little bit more. And, you know, it takes a bit more of a modern feel overall, but would, you know, this is, we had placed these at the Lincoln Park site, just to pick one of the sites to place them. But you can see with the roof forms, we're mimicking some of the houses as you'd continue your way down, but doing it in a bit of a modern form. And then even the cover drop-off here, we've got a glassy top on that, just to kind of really make it just more visually exciting right now. And you see that cover drop-off, the community, that we heard from the community, that the community center really needs overall on this version. The second one takes a little bit different feel, where it creates a little bit more of a grand overall entry portion here, with a bit one and a half stories in height through here. And then as you can see, the rest of the building is really truly just a one-story building, but this framed element here with wood on the interior, probably be some sort of composite material, not truly wood for the long-term maintenance. But just giving a warm feel, you know, at night, this area would glow and create a beacon within that area to let people know that this is open and really part of the community.
Council, your thoughts?
I like the choice of materials, the colors and whatnot, especially for the community center. I think that's, you know, placing that type of building, either that or the previous one, putting that type of building in the correct spot could really be a catalyst for future development in the area as well, which is also just an added peripheral benefit, but an important one to consider as well, especially if there's developable, developable land nearby.
What's yours on those two spots? Just some comments or questions?
I love the second one there for the community center.
Right.
And overall, all four of them are great. There's no snow in any of them. I love that.
But she does have a coat on.
Well, BK group, I think I got the right, BKV group, thank you for coming out. I know that this morning, it was a little treacherous for you all down on the metro, and so thank you for making the trip out. I think it was very valuable to have you here present, just to get more of the feel. I know for me, it was much more comfortable to have you here, so thank you for taking your time and coming, and we really do appreciate the work you've done. The thing that I really like about what you've done here is that this is portable. I mean, you can pick it up and move it someplace else, you can pick it up and move it someplace else, and you might just kind of move a line here or there, but the overall concept is correct, so.
As long as there's the area on the site, like you say, Mayor, the only other issue sometimes we look at is, are utilities available? Is the infrastructure available to support it? And all the sites that were looked at, there are those, so it is very plug and play. But we appreciate the opportunity. We look forward to supporting you more to hopefully figure this out as you continue to grow.
Okay, sounds good. So the only other thing that's kind of playing in my mind is, Ms. Mayor, we should go back on those, to Justin's comment, maybe we should go back to those people that have come to the table with us before, and just see if there's ways that we can bring people along with us? For collaboration on the City Hall piece as well? Makes sense?
Yep.
Understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody good? Mike's all packed up, he's ready to go. We're adjourned. Thank you.